About ten thirty. That's where I got confused.
That's probably where we should have it.
Yeah, really make it look like a trail.
Yeah. So that's how we'll change this.
Okay.
There was more, more there than the shows.
Yeah.
Well, do something to be aware of, you know.
It was a non-gaming case.
Hello Travis?
Did you have COVID?
No, they weren't.
I tested positive.
Yeah.
That's why I wasn't at the last meeting.
Doing all right.
Good.
Could go for a little more sleep.
The day before.
A little more what?
That morning.
Oh.
People were still testing me almost at midnight last night.
A home test.
Really?
I tested positive again.
Really?
So I called Travis and I said, I suppose you're not showing up.
So how, how things turn off?
So that's.
That's a good, good reason not to show up.
Really?
No.
So that's.
Lost by eight hours.
Does it two days ago?
Ah.
I did a home test in the same.
Where's your vote?
How many?
How many, how many votes total?
Total votes? Yeah, over nine hundred. And when there was three of us running four years ago, it was only seven.
But they say after the first five days, you're not contagious. But the state health officer says that's what the law says. She says, mister.
Yeah.
Everybody has a different opinion on that. And that came from a nurse. I thought, thank you, because that's what my opinion is too.
Because.
So I'm gonna have some free time.
My daughter, she reads.
Start next month.
Because I have been vaccinated.
My, my, uh.
I don't have to work.
So.
And it's only recommended that I wear a mask.
Boy, they got little rules all over.
But because you need to be vaccinated, you gotta work.
God, I'm sorry about that.
I'm not saying you didn't. I guess not.
Maybe we should up our.
The other thing is, we, we have a three-year annual physical.
We can't, we can't go with the state.
And he said, you need to be vaccinated again. He said, but get a different vaccine.
I don't know how to do it.
They want you to mix them. They each have a different strain.
Coming up.
Yeah, and I said, I just got over it. And he said, I know. He said, but in June. Well, it's June.
Oh, for him.
He says, that was May when I was there. He says, go get another shot.
So then, do they?
I'm not.
So close.
The only reason we did was kind of because we wanted to go overseas.
Recall or?
Well, uh, canvassing, canvassing, so twenty seven.
I'd get this. All the documentation.
Which country?
Basically the board.
But you never, which country?
And reviews everything and.
Yeah.
Cause they think.
Germany, Austria, Slovakia.
Didn't it require you a little card that says you were like?
Starts at eleven.
See, that's exactly what happened to me when I went overseas.
I got a letter that I'm part of that.
All I had to do is within five days prior to getting on the airplane, I had to have a doctor test us.
We had to.
Oh, you were on the canvas for you?
Well, we showed that we had.
Well, she goes back.
Vaccinated.
The, and that was actually. Chair of the commission, air auditor, and the kind of reporter to.
There's one that learned once.
Well, and, and that's, you kind of, chair of this isn't.
We have two masks. We have a twenty mask for touches. What, the guy over there?
I'm not, it's county, but I didn't mind.
Yeah.
So I went to America, I went to disease.
The only bad thing is if all of a sudden we got.
In public, no matter where they were, I asked them. And they were, they were so smart. Right. He'd walk out of the store and he'd come. Thank you. No matter what store I went to, there was some chicken.
We had.
No.
I could see it.
In fact, I've seen more people in America wearing masks than I get.
Yeah, never know.
And they were saying you have to wear them.
Never saying, never.
Somebody switched chairs with me.
Why?
You can track it up.
This one doesn't rock.
Bust it, you gotta loosen it up.
There's a hook, there's a deal on the side somewhere.
Some of them don't block.
Some of them don't.
Only one.
Got it.
This one does.
Find it. We should, we could.
Operator error and chairman.
Pilot, pilot, you could just put yourself forward again. There you go, lock in.
It was down to the ground. I almost hit my knee and my hip. Get me a little hip.
You worked for the day. He goes, are you dropping chairs?
No. You know what the guys at work used to do? We had real dark chairs. They would soak them down with. And you couldn't see it. You'd sit on that chair.
Have they done a holiday recording yet?
They would do the whole chair so you couldn't see.
Yeah.
I gave it one time, I sat down and just kept. I couldn't tell. I got up, walked out on my way, but.
Well, you're committed, aren't you?
Yeah.
Yep. Hey, Dan, how was you doing?
We're each.
How's it?
Morning. We're going today.
Okay, okay.
Still going on.
Yeah.
I got a copy. Just turn these off so it's easy for you guys.
Oh, I always seems down in that country.
Huh?
Easy is pretty good.
No, these were just a list of the Ryan brothers.
Okay.
So we put them on there in case they.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
That's gotta be almost God's country.
I have those two on.
Almost God's country, huh? Hi.
Bill.
How are you doing this morning?
Something on a big elevation with this.
Yeah.
Minutes you get a hundred forty-four point four nine.
Oh, okay, okay.
It's a.
The comma.
Seven hundred forty-four dollars and something.
Yeah. That's your center to be nice for.
Well.
Do we got streets turning here today or?
That's a long meeting.
I wrote that one handed to you. So sometimes I do a good job.
Do you know?
Uh-oh.
Our official blocks are all the time.
Do you need any?
Well, I mean, we got the bid opening, but you'll have to review it.
Yeah.
We, we'll be able to make this.
We'll have to review it. They have to review the bonds even before they can open the bid. Yeah, right?
I mean, Charlie can open it.
I can verify that there, that stuff's in there.
Okay.
So that we're opening it legally.
Yeah.
But he, yeah, he'll, he'll have time to review before we award.
Yeah, okay.
I'll be fine, yeah.
That, yeah, just.
I've done that before. Usually it's ideal if the attorney does it, but that's okay. I've done it before.
Oh, I, I could see you.
All right, ten o'clock, I'll call this, uh, special meeting of the Mercer County Commission to order. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So.
Chair.
Motion by Gene. There's a review of, uh, an approved bill's on there twice, but it's just, it's not a big deal.
Oh.
That's there and it's down here again.
We'll, we'll be fine. Motion by Gene, is there a second?
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Marv, any discussion? Seeing none. Gene?
Aye.
Wayne?
Aye.
Marv?
Aye.
And I'll vote aye. That motion passes. Um, before we get into the minutes, let's, um, have a motion to close the, uh, accepting of bids.
Oh, yeah. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'll move to, uh, uh, close the bid letting.
Okay, motion by Wayne, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Marv, any discussion? Seeing none. Wayne?
I'll vote aye.
Marv?
Aye.
Gene?
Aye.
I'll vote aye. That motion passes. All right, let's move back up to the minutes of the July, no, June fourth meeting? June first.
Mr. Chairman, Pellicomissioners, I see one correction.
Mm-hmm.
It's on the bottom of the first page. Just a typo. That one forty-four point four nine four should be a comma, so it says a hundred forty-four thousand four ninety-four point six.
Okay. Will you move to approve as amended?
Yes, and I move to, I move to approve the minutes as amended.
Okay, motion by Marv, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Gene, any discussion? Seeing none. Marv?
Aye.
Gene?
Aye.
Wayne?
I'll vote aye.
And I'll vote aye. That motion passes. Okay, Charlie, if you wanna come up and review the, the bids. Um, like we were discussing before the meeting started, um, we'll have to have, uh, our state's attorney, uh, review them, and Charlie will also review, um, individual bids to make sure everything is kosher before we would award.
Yeah, we can award at the next meeting.
Yeah, we have one next week, so.
Okay. So the first bid is from Northern Improvements. It looks like they're good to go. Gonna open the envelope.
Yeah. We gotta make sure it's kosher on the outside and then again.
So. Acknowledgement of the addenda, yep. We got, uh, one, let's see here. Total base bid of one million sixty-four thousand three hundred and seventy dollars and forty-seven cents. So one zero six four three seven zero point four seven. One. Zero six four. And the other one is from Bechtold Paving.
Yep.
Company. Yeah, company.
Yeah.
Try to keep that over here. Ten, one. We need a motion to accept this. One two. For the three.
License is good. Probably wasn't heard. I don't know if it's required. I mean, we'll have to have it on the next agenda, but award.
Bechtold Paving. Come in at nine hundred and eighty thousand eight hundred and fifty-six dollars and fifty-five cents. So nine eight zero eight five six point five five. And I will review these for accuracy. And then, uh.
Did you have a engineering estimate on it by chance?
Yeah, so last year before the oil prices went up, it was at eight twenty-five. Now, I think the latest one that we did was right around nine fifty to a million, somewhere in there is what we had for an estimate. After some oil prices jumped.
Every, every day.
Yeah.
Right.
Yep. So they're close. Yeah, they're, both of them look like they're pretty close to what I was expecting to come in at. But we'll have a recommendation of award, I guess, at the next meeting. I'll work with, uh. Should I, um, since this, uh, state's attorney's not here, would you like me to take this back and then provide copies back to you? For his review? Would that work best?
Yeah.
Okay. We can do that.
Think he need, well, for review.
For review, yes. Yep, that's fine. We can do that. That'll work. Yeah, that'll work. I probably do, but I just have to listen to him.
Not to put it on the agenda, yeah, cause then we'll have to review the budget and see if we decide to award it.
But everything appeared to check out fine. They had all the documentation they needed. They had acknowledgement of the addenda, all that stuff, so.
Do you think our attorney will have time to review it in one week? Cause I think the twenty-second is our next meeting, right?
Yeah. I mean, we'll put it on the agenda and if he reviews it, if he does, he does. If he doesn't, then we'll.
Move it again?
Yeah.
Okay. Just that, Dean, basically he'll check the numbers, make sure the numbers are right.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep. There's goofy things that have happened before where.
Yep, I know.
And we have to, the way it's written, so the way we handle it, we have to honor the bid price, the unit bid price, so. If there's a math error and the numbers shake out differently, then we will acknowledge or honor the unit bid price. Uh, I believe that's how statute, our contract reads on it, so. Have more information, I guess, to come.
Sure. Okay.
Okay.
That's all we have on, on the bid letting, so.
Okay.
Thanks, Charlie.
Yep, thanks, guys. Yep.
Since we have reviewing of approved bills on two spots, we can actually move forward with the review of the bills.
Review the bills, is that the name of the game?
That's the name of the game.
This was on here kind of a couple times. Says June fourth, now it says June one.
Yeah.
So cross off that other one?
Yeah.
Do you want the agenda approved?
I, I think we'll give them a little latitude. There was a lot going on last week and this week.
They did a good job.
Yeah.
Everybody had their eyes on you guys. Telling Travis, I got a phone call eleven thirty last night.
Why aren't they up yet?
Why aren't they done? I said, sir, they have thirty minutes. They're probably checking their numbers and verifying. I suggest you wait till.
Okay.
And he called this morning and thanked you.
I didn't even check until this morning.
I want you to do me know that you heard they have heat paper this morning.
Yeah.
I don't know if we got, I don't know if it's something to mention here or not. We got something odd in the way. They towed the county pickup to Hazen Motors. And they hired Lucky Bookman to tow the county pickup. There's two bills here of two, evidently two vehicles must have broke down. The way I read this, I, you guys look at it when you get it.
Okay.
See what you can make out of that.
It's, um, two different locations, two different vehicles.
Are they RVs or?
Says towed from county shop to Hazen Motors, license plate six nine three two seven three, and then the other one's towed from county dump road to Hazen Motors. With license plate six eight three five six six, which sounds like an official license plate number, cause it's just a number.
One was from the shop and one was from the, from the dump?
Yeah, it says dump road, so.
Wouldn't we load them on our own trailer and all move them?
I think we've always used a towing company, whether it's Lucky or it's, uh, Downtown Conoco or whoever.
Whoever. Air scares to lose restore.
I think we should hold this one and talk to the local department about it. You guys are.
Yeah, it'd only be a week and we'll have it.
I think an explanation doesn't, doesn't hurt a thing. Towed from the county shop, one vehicle, then one from the dump road. The dump road maybe. County shop, I'm curious why.
And then here's one for a rollover. That's actually.
Yeah, that's different. It's.
That's different, so, that's pretty common. Well, not common, but.
This is sheriff's department.
That's sheriff's department, yeah, yeah.
Little bit different. What's that voucher number, Gene?
There's no number on there.
One, two, three, eight, five.
That's it, that's it.
I would just, um.
This one we tested.
Ask. Let's, let's give them the pickup.
This, um, this backhoe service for removal of demolition of the building? Has anybody locked that job down and said that everything is set as factory?
I, I, yeah, I drove down there, me and Jim, and looked it up over and.
Okay, I just know that's part of the statutes that we're supposed to. Not supposed to pay over seventy percent of the bill until it's been approved, and so have you looked at it? Good?
Five bucks. Looks like a vacant lot again.
Did they seed it?
I don't know. Well, and I seen it, they had just sand in it, but, so.
The city might require that to be.
I don't know if, I don't know if it was in the spec or not.
Just a curiosity question. Who knows what a spork is?
It's a spoon fork combination, so it's rounded on the sides and has like three brongs.
Got it.
It's a. What would you call that? A slang term? It became an actual word?
Like the word heat?
Yep. Was never allowed until it was.
The heat wouldn't do it. Well, they shouldn't have said that.
Yeah. So May would have been when our propane price increase took effect.
Cause it's a little bit higher.
Fine, it is what it is.
Right. We probably won't need it Saturday.
Just don't have a roll.
Yeah. Is there a backup generator on that or? What's that?
We have a generator and a diesel.
Oh, it's diesel. It's not hooked to the propane? Dan kinda seems like the active guy. You'd come over on a bicycle and charge us up, wouldn't you?
No, he's got that Honda moped. That Honda moped with the pedals. I was.
No, I saw some of those on the, I'm trying to make sure that we really should get those.
The, I was just trying to picture myself, I'm gonna pull that two hundred fifty pound lick tub up to the dump ground hill with that moped. Put one in front and one in the back, so I can double it up, do you? Maybe if I get in front of a semi, they'll push me up there.
Remember those, uh, ESPN commercials where back when Lance Armstrong was considered, uh, legit? Guy's working on the computer, all of a sudden the power goes down. Goes downstairs, he's like, hey Lance, what's going on? Oh, I thought everybody went home. And he starts pedaling and the power comes up.
Well, I don't know, I got a little one hundred, but it's a dirt bike. I ain't going that way. They wouldn't like seeing you drive around below this thing, no license on it. But it does good on gas.
You know, six and a half months ago when I drove from here to Arizona, I was upset when it was above three.
I. I say really bad. As they appear.
I'll tell you what I think, three, four times before I start my diesel truck these days. I think so.
Oh, you're going to strike bucks.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I didn't know this, I lived in the drive, you blow like.
Yeah.
Gas station right outside there. After, oh, lowest gas price, it was low last chance coming in here. By the accident, there was no sign saying when the gas first. It would be to get gas to our reserve, you pull off in your accident. Show me the two dollar.
Thank you for updating us, it was good work.
Welcome.
It's nice.
We can discuss it more in twenty seconds, I just figured you guys would wanna.
Yeah, we can't discuss it today.
Right, exactly.
See our hazard mitigation plan with KLG? It already shows us that we're thirty-one days late and the statement date was just a couple of weeks ago. Not that it really matters, but.
They weren't prompt payment apparently.
I guess, it'd be nice to get an update from Carmen at the next meeting, if we could, where we're at on that.
Or we're done finally, or?
Well, the invoice isn't for near enough, so, I don't know where we're at on it. I think we had twenty-five thousand for that hazard mitigation plan. Does that sound right? It was in that neighborhood, so.
Questions, Samantha? It says Mercer County Highway Department, it's got Dean's signature on it, Department head. Just curious. Mercer County Highway Department, fuel.
Sheriff's department fills up at the county shop.
That's one of those times.
Do you know what the protest money thing is?
Treasury Department?
From the Treasury Department?
I don't so much.
You have any idea what that is, Samantha?
No, not whatsoever. We're gonna ask you to come in and explain it to us just for satisfaction. Please, we can take this, as you don't wanna get them out of order though. Don is the one that signed this, so.
Yeah.
With something that disentails claims?
I don't, yeah, I don't know, I mean.
I don't know, yeah.
Plus it had something to do with our ordinance, or, I just don't know.
Protest fee.
Hello, everybody.
Morning.
Good morning, Don.
voucher you're looking at, we have one taxpayer that paid their taxes under protest. And after a certain timeframe, we have to, if they haven't done all the other steps required to whatever they have to do, then we have to apply those taxes. And so, I have to pull that money back out of the protest fund to apply to their taxes.
Got it, good, makes sense. We, we hadn't seen that before.
Thanks, Don.
Thanks.
Little snap through there, good job.
Anyway, you can protest your taxes.
It's a lot of, a lot of that.
Learn everything.
Yes.
I don't know what my reason would be, but.
Oh, my goodness. Didn't bring my phone.
Alice, you didn't need a notater here.
Mine's almost due.
Yours almost due. I think mine expires in August, I'll have to check that. It's either August of this year or August of next year, is it four years now? Yeah, I think the first time I got it was six, that was a good deal.
Just a curiosity thing, I know you ladies are tired. I've seen two invoices had to do with the election, how are we doing as far as budget wise, any? I'm not too worried about, I'm just curious.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have the latest numbers.
I think we had seven thousand in there, what do they have in there?
Sixty.
Sixteen?
Sixty in there, yeah, but I'm unsure.
Don't worry about it, don't, don't look it up either.
Everything done with landfill?
Lake.
The liner?
Yes.
Okay.
Just waiting on the state's approval.
Okay, so construction's complete, we're just waiting for approval? Because I see the bills in there, so.
Oh, yeah.
It's a little one. You need the approval before you can put garbage on it, or?
Yeah.
We're doing a good job stretching this bill thing till eleven. What was it?
It has to be eleven because it's on the agenda.
Yeah. And we'll probably take a recess until then, once we're done with the bills, so. Thanks. Didn't make the rules, we gotta follow them, all right? Just 'cause I watched a few good men doesn't mean I wanna go over there.
I'm gonna just see what we're buying in shields.
Horses, yeah.
Wasn't in my thought, I don't know why.
You were thinking ammo, or what?
Or the first thing. That's the first thing you think of. Is that it? I think I can throw these and they're just, uh.
Just, uh, see if we can catch it?
See if you can catch.
So, did we get a dividend check from West River too? Actually, that was a nice one.
You know. I'm glad you brought that up, I wonder if the county might want to send. At least recognize, West River paying on dividends and helping. I had a phone call from a guy last year when I, when I received it and I never acted on it, he says, you know, you guys might wanna recognize the dividend checks that we're getting from local co-op there. Usually we get a little knife or something.
Give it what?
A little knife, a pocket knife.
Yeah, what's her name used to come over and, and whatever, you know, it'd either be a knife or whatever, West River. And she, I think she bought the check over personally, presented it to the board and to the auditor and everything. Wish I knew her name, there's a lady.
Linda?
Yeah. Yep, there you go. Did they review every one of these, honey?
Yeah. I don't know how you would dispute a phone bill, but.
Can't, there's too much, you'd have to read every single one of them. How would you verify?
I don't know. Was there one way we're holding out?
Yep. Good. Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the bills with the exception of the towing bill for the two pickups, the road department, for further information.
Okay, motion by Marv, is there a second?
So moved.
Seconded by Gene, any discussion? Seeing none, Marv?
Aye.
Gene?
Aye.
Wayne?
I would aye.
I would aye, that motion passes. Uh, we'll take a recess until eleven AM, and then we'll do the non-gaming case.
If you guys don't mind, I'm gonna go get my colored map, it'll be a little easier to read if we have any questions.
That sounds great.
Tell me when.
Right there.
Okay.
Perfect.
Does anybody ever say when?
I usually do, but that's just to be a smart bud.
My grandparents were good at that, and I don't think it wouldn't be smart, let's just say when, uh, when? All right. Two, one. All right, eleven o'clock, let's reconvene the commission meeting, and we got Don to present non-gaming case two nine seven four eight.
Well, let's just, do you guys have any questions after what you've read? Let's start with that.
So.
What they're trying to acquire is I guessing the Sondra, Bender property right here, here, and here. These three percents.
Okay. And that's north of eighteen oh six? Right. What highway is that, eighteen oh six?
Eighteen oh six, the rest here.
Okay.
Whose property?
It's Sondra, Bender, and others.
Oh.
So.
Go ahead.
If this is all labeled USA here, that's all, I think, that's travel land.
Yeah.
North of it.
Yeah, the reservation line is the, that has section line between eight, nine.
The dotted line?
The dotted line, yeah, right there. Yeah, the dotted lines are the sections, but, uh.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
So, a mile and a half north of eighteen oh six is reservation land.
And they have acquired, you know, Shire's north, their Fred Shire property, they acquired that property.
Well, I would like to have our state's attorney give us an opinion on this. Because this is land that's within the county, and so we still have to provide fire protection, police protection, and access to the property. And that all comes off our taxes, so it's not land that would be outside of our jurisdiction, so it's within our jurisdiction, so my inclination to begin with would be to say no, unless there's some legal, something legal that we would have to adhere to.
Well, I was reading this right before we came in, and I don't know if you guys are reading this the same way, but it kinda sounds like you can get a thirty day extension.
It does say that on the second page, on the back of the second page. If we, if we respond within thirty days, which would be this coming Friday, if we respond, say we want another thirty days to review, we can do that.
And I think our justification would be for our state's attorney's opinion on.
Yes.
What our legal requirements and.
Yeah.
Right.
Responsibilities are, I guess, and I haven't read the whole thing, but would this then become part of the reservation? Is that what I'm understanding?
That's my understanding, but I, it doesn't clearly ever say that in here, so.
It doesn't, my understanding is that it wouldn't become part of the reservation, but it would become property of the three affiliated tribes.
So it would become sovereign property, that's why we don't get the taxes.
Right, that would be my understanding.
Might not necessarily be part of the reservation. Might not necessarily be part of the reservation.
Yes, that's, that's why I would be opposed to it unless we have some legal obligation that we, that would supersede what we would decide, that's what I wanna know.
Well, just for interest part, Dunn County must have, I don't know if this happened to them also, but I had a call, and they said, well, the county commissioners. Basically, it, uh, it, uh, must have been approached about this, so we could possibly check with them to see if, and I had no idea what they're talking about. And he was talking about the tax base, that they had, basically sounded like they purchased land over there also. So, uh, I think we know what, what we're talking about now.
Yeah, and they would have some experience in how they handled it, or what their legal.
Yeah, I'm thinking they went through the same deal, because I, it was totally new to me until today, now I.
So, um, I'm just thinking of justifications in our response, cause when that was first brought to us, there was no exhibit A.
Correct, it was left out, but we've recently gotten that.
We've gotten that, but that doesn't extend our original time, because they sent it inaccurate, or incomplete, not inaccurate, incomplete. That could be part of our justification, is that, you know.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure that it was incomplete, it was on the back of one of the pages, and I'm not sure that it was noticed.
Correct.
Okay.
I think it was looked up, overlooked.
Overlooked.
It was just overlooked, yeah.
Okay, so that can't be part of our justification, okay. And I, I mean, until our state's attorney looks at it, I really don't have opinion one way or the other, I mean, we need to know.
Yeah, we need to know the legalities of it.
And that, that maybe justification, I, I, I mean, all you can do is try.
Right.
You know.
I suggest we send a request for a thirty day extension to review case two nine seven four eight, to get more information.
Okay, motion by Marv, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Gene, discussion. So as part of that, who would send the response, would it be the legal?
I think the treasurer does, it was sent to you guys, right?
It was, the envelope was addressed to the Mercer County Commission slash treasurer, so I would prefer it come from you guys.
Okay.
Okay.
And since the first one came from you guys to start with, with the, you know, where you thought you had incomplete information, it's probably best to stick with the same people sending the letters, I guess, my opinion, for what it's worth.
Sign that before Friday.
Okay. It is, who's gonna draft the letter? I mean, should we have the legal, um, department draft?
Yeah, we'll ask our state's attorney to respond.
I mean, I have zero problem signing it, I just wanna have it formal and correct, so that we're not, uh, technicality.
Means it's gonna be, if, it'll be a legal thing, um, a legal thing, we need our state's attorney, they should, he should, um, draft the letter, and we can sign it as a commission, but we need his expertise on this.
And I agree, cause it wasn't, I mean, it wasn't addressed to the auditor's office, and actually, we were brought a copy of it, so I know that we had received it, I think, in the office, but then it came. Yeah, it came in, you guys stamped it on the eighteenth, and then brought it over to us. Right, but it wasn't addressed to us, so it just got mixed in with our mail, so then was taken over to the treasurer's office, so if we could get Todd to respond to it, then I think that would be the best.
Right.
When we talk to Todd, ask him to respond, I think it'd be a real good idea to include Gene's comments that we still would be responsible for access in and out of this property.
Right, yeah.
And we would have some, we would lose tax base, but we'd still have responsibility.
And if you, the letter that I drafted originally to present to you guys, just with some arguments, if you wanna use any of that in there, that's fine, we just don't want, I mean, it shouldn't come from us, so we would prefer that it not be connected to us, you know.
Well, and I, and I totally agree with that, I mean, it was kind of a combination addressment, and maybe it went to the treasurer, because it had to do with taxation.
And that's, that would be my guess, yeah, so, so yes.
Okay, any other discussion on requesting the extension for thirty days, further review? Okay, seeing none, Marv?
Aye.
Gene?
Aye.
Wayne?
I'll vote aye.
I'll vote aye, that motion passes, thanks, Don.
You're welcome. Have a great rest of your day, everybody.
Yeah? And with that, we'll close this meeting of the Mercer County Commission. Now that we're closed, I'm just gonna state that our next meeting is a special meeting as well, so if you have any agenda items, please get those to the auditor's office by.